The United States of America. In the republic for which it stands, one nation under our God. In this
Recording in progress.
...
You have one minute to wait.
All right, we'll call Jesse.
Ruben, here.
Sim.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Bishop.
Here.
We are called to order at six thirty. There is a copy of the list of the packet in the council chamber that's located on the counter by the entrance near the clockmaker. It is for your public inspection, please leave it at the counters to be concerned. The city of Grant abides by the Nebraska Open Meeting Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meeting Act is on display in its meeting room as required by the state law, which is on the wall there. If the audience has any questions for Scott, over on the counter, there are some blank pieces of paper and pens. You may submit a question to our city attorney. And then she will review them to make sure we're legally able to ask those questions and then she will give them to us and we will ask the question. So before we get to the interview part, if you would like to submit a question, the paper is on the counter. The mayor and the city council reserve the right to enter in a closed session at any time during the meeting in accordance with the Nebraska Open Ma- Open Meeting Act, even though the closed session may not be indicated on the agenda. It is the intention of the mayor and the city council to take up items on the agenda in the order they're presented. However, we reserve the right to take up matters in a different order to accommodate the schedules of the city council members, persons having items on the agenda, and the public. We also reserve the right to adjust the order of items on the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak to public comment may be limited at three minutes per person with a limit of two individuals speaking per topic position. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and the agenda topic you wish to speak upon. Also, this meeting is being recorded. Did everyone have a chance to review the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, please note they all have a chance to review the agenda.
We'll make a motion to accept the agenda for the November nineteenth, twenty twenty four special meeting.
Second. Attorney, move, attorney second, that we accept the November nineteenth, twenty twenty four agenda, any discussion. Andrea, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Attorney?
Yes.
Motion carried. Review and action of prior meeting minutes, November twelfth, twenty twenty four.
I will accept action of prior me- Meeting minutes for November twelfth, twenty twenty four, and we waive the reading.
Second.
Attorney, move, Sam second, that we accept the prior meeting minutes from November twelfth, twenty twenty four, and waive the reading. Sam, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Attorney?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Motion carried. Do we have any public comment tonight?
Yeah, Dennis Hansen, the address, Red Rock, Orange, Grand Nebraska, six nine one four oh seven seven. Oh, one meeting I came and asked if we could have some citizen input. I believe all the council agreed to that or shook their head like they do, so. I, I know we're gonna talk about one person. I wonder if it's the intent to interview any other applications?
We, we have interviewed four of their applicants.
Okay.
Several.
And would there be any input from the citizens on that? Was there, or will there be?
We moved forward the person that we decided that met.
So basically we're down to one person, correct?
Correct.
So what was my input from the citizen prior to that decision?
I, I guess I don't understand the question.
You said that we could have some input from the citizens.
Right, and that's what-
What was my input?
You're part of the interview process.
No, prior to this selection of candidates. What was my input, or any citizen's input as far as it goes?
I-
The answer is none. You guys blew me off in my opinion.
No, we formed a committee and-
What citizens were on that committee?
You are one of them, you have interview questions that you have tonight.
But you, you just said you're planning on interviewing anybody else.
We moved forward the candidate, if there had been two people, we would have been two.
Sure.
If there would have been ten-
The selection, I had no input to who was selected whatsoever. Nobody in this city had any input into who could be selected. Mr. Sam, I appreciate your comment, sometimes we say outside here you made a comment. They didn't interview well, is that correct?
That is true.
I guess that would be fair to say, right?
There is-
Does that automatically make them not a viable candidate, just because of the interview?
There were other, there were other reasons, but unfortunately we can't discuss those.
I'm-
Those are private, those are private interviews and, and you, if the Sydney- People don't have business to know that-
I understand.
Why a person is deficient or not.
I understand.
I mean, I mean, that wouldn't be appropriate.
What I'm saying, we are down to one person, well, you're probably gonna hire him. I know the gentleman, I think he's a good person, that isn't the problem. I didn't have any input in that, anybody here, or anybody else in the city did. I'm not happy, I'll put it that way, obviously you can see that. And I think next to the next time, don't do that ever again to me. If I have to say.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments? All right, there'd be no unfinished business, we will move forward. Did anyone have a question that they submitted to the attorney or would like to submit? I can pause here while you do that. Okay, Scott, we've come forward and had a seat. And Danny, would you like to ask your questions?
You know, as I said earlier, the decision's been made, it doesn't make any difference what I ask. I reserve the right now to-
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I, I understand absolutely how you're feeling, Mr. Hansen, I, I guess what I would say is that all of the council members have been elected to this position and we've been elected to help move the city forward at, at the request of the voting public. And so we would ask that you continue to have faith in us to make wise decisions on behalf of the city. And, and we did sit in on several interviews, we looked at several applications. We're all in this seat because we've been elected to do so. And so I, I understand how it feels that there's one person to interview, the decision has absolutely not been made at this point. And, and I hope that you feel confident in hearing me say that. But we also didn't wanna waste the time of a candidate, and didn't wanna waste the time of a public to bring forward somebody that we knew did not have the qualifications that we needed to even move to this step. That, that's all I-
May I respond?
Sure, absolutely.
Uh, I, I can't, I don't know them, I was never, or anybody else was ever sitting in there outside the council to say, I, I don't, I just have to take your word for it, I have no idea.
Sure.
You know, and by the way, I was elected twice to this situation, I understand what election is all about.
Well, all right, let's move forward. And so we have some questions that were approved by our attorney so that we do not violate any, any laws. I'll have Sam go first to pick one, and then Andrea, if you would pick one, and we'll, and then we'll do a round robin. And we don't have to ask all the questions, we can ask whatever portion that the council desires. So, Sam, would you like to go first, please?
Sure. Thanks Scott for being here, I know it's been a long process, we've had lots of interviews and lots of people and going through this thing. And so now it's into this part where we can be a public, so public can be involved. So, I like to start a question that just lets everybody kinda just listen and hear about how maybe get to know you and how you think. So, if you could witness any event in history, what would it be and why? That's a great question. I would say as it relates kind of to our current modern situation, probably like the Constitutional Convention, that would have been, what, seventeen eighty-one, when our founding fathers drafted the Constitution and uh, the, you know, Bill of Rights and all that stuff, just to hear what, what discussion that was. And, and they, they were all young men at, at that time, I mean, I, I believe most of them were like in their twenties and thirties, a couple older guys in there. But the wisdom of those individuals and being able to basically sculpt this great constitutional republic out of nothing, from the ashes of war, and to create a system of government that functions so well that even here today, we as Americans, we all flourish. And be part of that, or at least be a fly on the wall, would have been probably a pretty interesting thing to observe.
Right. Andrew? Are you finished?
Yes, I have a question.
Describe leadership.
Another good question. I would say leadership is, is not something that can be taught. Uh, it can be learned over time. I, I feel as though certain people have it and certain people don't. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, or either person's a lesser of an individual because they're not a leader. Uh, I believe leadership is learned through experience and being able to interact with people and to treat people with respect and to surround yourself with people that as a whole, the whole group moves forward together. One individual leading from, maybe not the front, certainly not the rear, but shoulder to shoulder with the people that he is ser- he or she is serving with, uh, to achieve whatever outcome that may be. Uh, I, I believe that leadership is viewed from somebody who's following a leader as, you know, they trust that individual, they are confident in that individual's vision to move them forward, to, you know, give, create for them a better station in life. And as a leader, you also bear the responsibility, so if things do go wrong, being able to own that responsibility. Own the outcome and be responsible for it, accept whatever consequences there may be. On the flip side of that coin, if things go well, then there's also the benefits and the accolades of that as well, so. That's certainly what I have driven toward and my, throughout my, my career, I've always gravitated to some form of a leadership role. Not the, maybe not the guy on the very top, but certainly somebody who has a vision and tries to surround myself with people that share that vision and we can all move forward.
Thank you, Kimberly. Um, let's see.
What is it about this job and this position with the city that's attracting you to the role?
So I've had a lot of jobs in the past, going all the way back to when I was fourteen years old, working on a Christmas tree farm. That was a great job, it was a lot of fun, a lot of Christmas spirit, learned a lot of things. Did a whole bunch of different types of work throughout my younger years, working, I sold strawberries and worked at a pumpkin patch. I also worked at a loan office and worked changing oil at a Jiffy Lube. All these things gained me the experience to realize what I wanted to do and what I didn't wanna do. Christmas tree farms are awesome, but I certainly would not wanna be doing that as a career for the rest of my life. I'm sure there are people that, that want to and I appreciate that. I, I gained a lot of real life experience when I was working in construction back in California. Started off as basically a guy with a shovel and asked to jump on the heavy equipment and worked my way up through that and ultimately became a senior project manager and was responsible for some very large projects until it kind of went sideways and I decided that I needed to get into law enforcement because I'd always kind of wanted to. Put myself through the academy in California, job market was tight and ultimately started looking elsewhere. Given them close proximity to fam- to family in Denver, Nebraska seemed like a great place to come to. So, we ended up in Little Grant, America, and it was something about this town that just really drew me here. Probably the cleanest town that I went through and interviewed in. Our sheriff's office, credit to the county, very professional outfit and I was very attracted and wanted to come work here and, you know, spent many years working for Jim and I learned quite a bit and really found that my calling was in public service. As many of us know, our kids grow up and we watch them grow up and I had to make a very difficult decision. And I felt that it was most important to put my family first and be able to participate in their activities and watch them grow up. And unfortunately, working in sheriff's office, the schedule was really difficult for that and it was starting to, it was starting to have an effect on my personal life. I was approached out of the blue by Kevin Poppy and he asked me if I was interested and I said I'd never even considered it, but let's talk. Sat down and talked, I'm starting, this is the, this is the Cliff Notes version, by the way. We sat down and talked and he kinda laid it out and I thought, you know, this, this might be a great opportunity here to kinda knock some of the cobwebs out of my brain and, you know, exercise some skills that I hadn't used in a while, primarily learning. And it, it was a real eye opener to get into a completely new industry, not knowing very much about it at all. And, you know, I've got some great coworkers over there and they've taught me a lot and been patient with me and I've learned quite a few things. And I was approached with this opportunity and to be honest, it wasn't something that I had initially even considered. But it kinda came forth and I thought, wow, this is great, so I can get back into public service and serve the citizens here in this city and those passing through in a way that, don't get me wrong, it's satisfying and I do enjoy fixing people's internet and when their phones go down, Tim and I, we've, we've spent a lot of time out in the middle of nowhere working on copper lines. And it's really nice in the fall and the spring, not so much in the summer or the winter. But anyway, that's a great way to serve people, I do feel like I'm, I'm called to something more than that. Therefore, this position became an opportunity and I saw myself as the perfect fit for it because I could continue in that pathway of public service and not have the stresses of law enforcement and still be able to interface with people. I, I love talking to people, I know all of you and, and that's, that's probably my strongest aspect is just being able to talk to people and, and form relationships. So, this is right in line with what I wanna do.
I was balancing that question with like run through your resume and so that worked out. It did really well.
So that's, that's Scott Miller in my cell, so in case y'all didn't know, most of you probably.
Appreciate it, thank you. Attorney? Um, how do you handle people who are upset with you or a situation?
That's another good question, and thank you for the questions, these are very thoughtful. I had many years of experience of dealing with upset people. Some people in this room know what it's like. Working for the sheriff's office in Perkins County required a very unique skill set because being such a small agency, you didn't always have your buddies close by or even available at all. So, being resourceful and being able to diffuse a situation with your words was probably, they call it verbal judo. And that was probably one of the most important aspects because you can certainly talk yourself into a fight, but it's easier to talk yourself out of a fight. And ninety-nine times out of a hundred times, the individual who's upset really just wants to be heard. You don't have to agree with them, you don't have to even solve their problem a lot of the times. They just wanna blurt it out and they wanna be validated and feel that my problem is important. So you give them that validation and all of a suddenly, the temperature ratchets down just a little bit. And then you just talk and you work through it and you solve the problem to an extent where they may not get everything they want, but there's a compromise on both sides and that's kinda where you wanna end up being. I would equate it to, I don't know, I've mentioned it to one of you guys, herding cattle. You know, when you are trying to move a herd of cattle, you don't lead them from the front because they're not gonna follow you, they're just gonna go the other way. Uh, you certainly can't lead them from behind because they'll just scatter, so you gotta put them against the fence and you lead them from the side and usually the oldest, wisest one gets out first. So the cows think they know, they think they're going where they want to go, but you're actually sending them where they need to go. And that's kind of a oversimplified way of saying, hey, this is how we diffuse the problem and get a bunch of critters where we need them to go.
Very good. Tell me what your perception is of what the duties of the city superintendent does.
So I've gone through the job description multiple times, it's a very lengthy, wordy one, almost like it was written by an attorney or something. Maybe. And yeah, I, I, I feel that, you know, and I'm sure you can speak to it, the, the job of a city superintendent is to wear quite a few hats. And basically be the primary, hopefully the primary point of contact for the public between, you know, the city affairs and people coming in and, and with issues or questions or they need help with, whatever. You know, managing the public works operations, all the functions, you're working with our, our boards and all that. And of course being a liaison between the council and the boards and the public and all that. Of course managing budgeting and, you know, inventory, all the, all the things that come along with it. From moving snow to, you know, helping, you know, figure out what trees need looked at. These are all a lot of things. And basically, kind of what I was kinda doing at the sheriff's office, you know, and, and doing currently at, at Great Plains is just being well-rounded and being able to approach problems, try to solve them on your own. And if not, reaching out to the people that are experts or know more about it and seeking advice. I don't pretend to know everything, but I'm certainly not afraid to ask and certainly willing to learn.
Very good, thank you. Sam?
Tell me about a time you disagreed with a decision and how you handled it. That's a, that's a subjective question because it, I guess it depends on what, what the context is. Well, for instance, where, where I'm working now, I, I may see a problem that needs solved and I may view it as needing to be solved a certain way. Uh, versus somebody who has more experience than me, say, yes, I understand that, but this is the way that it needs to be done. I may disagree with it, but I would generally defer to the wisdom and experience of somebody who's been doing it longer than I have. Like I said before, I don't pretend to know everything. I would be fundamentally opposed to any issue that would violate a law, morals or ethics though, in which case that would certainly be a matter to stand up and say, hey, you know, I think we're out of line here and this is something that we probably need to get another party involved in, if it's that type of a conflict. I, I wouldn't say there's any specific issue where I had an out and out disagreement that came to an argument, anything like that. It's that pragmatism and that willingness to kind of get what you both want, that problem solving type of deal. So, I would say that it, it's a case by case basis. And even just taking two to three seconds to respond when somebody asks you a question or says something, just think and process, really just take your time and come up with a thoughtful answer and work through it in a methodical manner, making sure it's in line with policy and the law and all that kinda stuff.
What do you think needs improved in the city and how would you improve it?
Well, I'll start by saying there's a lot of great things that have happened here in the city in the past few years. I will, I will credit the council, the mayor, our former superintendents and the boards for getting a lot of stuff done around here. Our main street looks awesome, our pool is fantastic. Our engine breaking required signs are a little bit too small. When I worked at the sheriff's office, that was a personal crusade of mine to inform our Class A C D Ls drivers with their tractors and trailers that there is a sign, albeit maybe eighteen by twenty-four inches, that says you cannot jake break into town. And when you hear complaints about people practically getting their windows rattled out of their house, that's a problem. So I would, I never wrote a ticket to a trucker, so for truckers in the room, I understand what that can do to a C D L. But I certainly took the opportunity to educate them and the number one thing I always heard was, well, I didn't see the sign. My response was, you are a professional and you are required to not only see, see the sign, but by, by what it says on there. So, that is one thing, the jake breaking. I love it when they do it at five in the morning and you go, holy, you don't even sense. The trains, I understand, they can't do nothing about the trains, they gotta do their thing, they were here, they're, they're, they're the reason why Grant is here, but. There, there's several things. You know, just with, with our parks, I've, I've got some ideas, I, I don't wanna get too into the weeds with it, but there are a few things that, that I can see around town that, you know, could use a little bit of, I don't know, what do you wanna say, maybe a little lipstick here and there. Tightening up our public works, you know, and really making sure that our, our city crew is, is working effectively and they have what they need to do their jobs effectively. I know snow removal is always a point of contention every year. You know, and that's, I'm not saying I have the answer because I don't think there is just one universal way to remove snow. There's big cities that have big budgets and they can do all that stuff, we're not there. So it's fighting and compromise and explaining to the people that, you know, I, I'm one of them, you know, I, I've, I've wondered sometimes why they do the things they do and I don't understand. If appointed to this position, one, one of my first points of order would be to ride along with the guys and just see what they do in a day. Because I, I'm very curious. I've driven around, I've, I've seen them doing things, but I don't know what a week's worth of work entails for our public works guys. So, that would be very important to understand what, what they do and what they need to do their job better and more efficiently. So I think kind of more of a all encompassing, like, let's just have a look at the big picture here, the thousand foot view and focus on what needs done right now and kind of triage and work through it. And obviously there's budgetary constraints and weather and time and all that stuff, so, but it's, it's a process, I would say.
Very good. Kimberly?
Yes. I'm gonna ask for a specific situation. I understand if it needs to be from a position outside of your experience in this city. But can you tell us about a specific time that you had to give feedback to a coworker or an employee? What was the situation? How did they respond and what was the outcome?
Okay. I will, I'll keep it recent and relevant. When I was working at the sheriff's office, I was the chief deputy, so I worked directly for the sheriff and I had people who were under my, I guess, span of authority. And my job was to And my job was to basically work with these guys, help them with their cases, package stuff up, look through it and approve it and move it on to the sheriff for his discretion as to send it on to the county attorney and whatnot. A police report is written by an officer and they sign their name on it. And once they sign their name on it, it moves up the chain and eventually ends up in court and goes on the record for many cases, at which point it is etched into stone for the rest of history, uh, unless something happens with the case. So I was very particular about grammar, very particular about punctuation, paragraph structure, all that kinda stuff. It sounds kinda nerdy, but that, that was kinda my thing. And I had, um, I'm, I'm not gonna say, uh, you know, who or, you know, which number of people it was, but there were particular issues with reports coming across my desk that were just not good. And so, uh, it basically took several tries of me explaining, hey, you're putting your name on this report and probably fifty years down the road, there's gonna be some poor deputies sitting up here at one o'clock in the morning in the middle of January and it's ten degrees below zero outside and they have nothing to do. What are they gonna do? They're gonna go in the files and they're gonna pull out old reports. Because they're very interesting, it's amazing when you look back at some of the reports that were written here back in the forties and fifties in pencil and they're like two sentences long. It's like, guy stole horse, found guy, returned horse, uh, took him to jail. Like, that was the report. And it's like, and this guy's name is on it. And you go, my goodness, this is like Barney Fife, you know, and that's how this guy will always be remembered. So I said, take some pride in your work. This is going into record forever and people will know about this. So I really want you to work on doing things the way you were taught in the academy and the way things are expected by the sheriff here. And over the course of a few weeks, uh, and working with this particular deputy and sending it back with red ink all over it, he eventually started to understand, hey, you know, I need to pour a little pride into this and I am putting my name on it. I am deputy such and such and this is my work and this is the legacy of the market I'm gonna leave. And that was, that was a challenge, but ultimately, things improved significantly. Uh, especially during court when a case is, is finally disposed or whatever, they have to read into the record the factual basis, which is basically the report. And that gets read in front of everybody, including the judge. And, uh, you, the, you know, the, the judge notices when those factual bases are better and it just looks better. So I think I got a positive outcome from that. That's just one particular instance that was kinda near and dear to me and what I expected from my guys.
Follow-on question to that, so I can imagine that the initial conversation might not have been very well received, that's, it's a personal thing, right? So I guess, how did, how did that individual respond?
There's a way of doing it, um, it's that problem-solving approach of, hey, you know, we all have to do this job and we all have to do our reports this way. The way your reports are, are not quite up to par. If you're willing to let me work with you on this, we can go through kinda item by item and you can understand what's expected of you. Didn't really get a whole lot of pushback, I mean, other than just like, oh, you know, kinda like, you know, kind of like a millennial response or, I don't wanna say millennial, like a Gen, Gen Z kinda response where it's like, oh my gosh, you're making me do more work. Well, yes, but I'm gonna work through it with you, so I'm gonna sit down and do this work with you as well because it's important to me and you doing better is important to me as well. So makes you look good, makes me look good, everybody wins, so let's do this. And, um, I think there was a, a positive response to that.
What is your management style?
Definitely not micromanaged. I feel like getting to know people and understanding what their strengths and abilities are and what their shortcomings are, you cannot apply the same managing style to everybody. Uh, it just doesn't work. I mean, it does work if you don't care, but, um, those people probably aren't gonna be happy and they probably, there's gonna be issues. So getting to know each individual on a personal basis and working with them. And some people need to be told what to do, they need to be put in motion like a robot. You know, say, hey, this task needs to be performed, you push the go button on it and they do the task. But they don't really think outside the box. And so if something else needs to be factored in, you kinda have to guide them. Other people, they understand what needs to be done and all you have to do is say, hey, this is the goal we wanna reach, you figure it out. So that person can figure it out. Some people are a combination of both and it's a matter of understanding what, and how people operate. And going back to the herding cattle thing, they, they, they think they're doing it their way, but ultimately there's, you know, it's putting bumpers on a bowling alley, you know? That ball still goes forward although you're kinda keeping it roped in and offering guidance and having that, you know, that, that big picture, that thousand-foot view, this is what needs to be done. Uh, sometimes, eh, a shortcoming of mine is I, I sometimes tend to jump in there and wanna do it as well. And sometimes you kinda miss the forest for the trees. If you're down in there digging a ditch, well, who knows where this ditch is going 'cause nobody's back watching it, so, you know. And sometimes I have to conscientiously pull myself back and say, you know, as a manager, I have to make sure that, that we are on task and moving forward with what the objective is.
Very good. I'm gonna piggyback on that. Have you ever managed employees? If so, how many and what was your role?
Sure, uh, at, at the sheriff's office recently, uh, I had anywhere from, oh gosh, I don't know, to one, one to two, the, I think we were up to maybe four at one time in my, in my direct, uh, supervision. Uh, when I worked for All West remediation, a construction company, uh, kinda at our peak when things were really good, uh, right before the two thousand eight crash, uh, things were really great and we had multiple jobs going at once and I was responsible. We probably had at least six crews in the field with about ten guys apiece, uh, running heavy equipment and spreading gravel and grading and building and doing all kinds of stuff, so. And, you know, throughout that point in my career, anywhere from probably twenty to like forty, fifty guys, so. And I didn't, I wasn't, I had managers working, you know, my, my field leads were working for me. Um, so I wasn't actually out there physically managing every guy, but, uh, ultimately being responsible for those projects, I had to, they had to report me, so.
Very good.
What do you think the three most important things are to attract new people to the community?
Housing is one of them, without question. Uh, jobs, obviously. And I would say maintaining, I don't know if I'm answering you too quickly here, but this immediately jumps to mind, maintaining our small-town feel. I'm gonna call it charm, because Grant does have charm. I, I, I think that's why young people go off to school and they go to Lincoln or whatever, they get a taste of the big city. They find their significant other, they get married, they really wanna come, they wanna come back to Grant 'cause they wanna raise kids here. I'm not saying all of them do, but a lot of them do and I've noticed it. And I've been here long enough to watch quite a few of them grow up and leave and come back into our family. That's a satisfying feeling, especially where I'm originally from in Southern California. It's just a great big city, you don't know anybody, maybe your neighbor on either side. Um, out here, you know everybody and that's that small-town charm and that's, I think, what attracts people here. Um, and of course, jobs and housing certainly accommodate that and make that a more viable reality. And I know that we're working on some of that, which is great.
Very good.
Thank you.
Andrew, do you have another one?
We've pretty much covered, pretty much everything, I think. Kimberly has more she can, I mean, he's answered some of the other questions.
Yeah, yeah.
So I guess, I, that's what my point, but. Go ahead, Kimberly, if you see one on there that you don't feel that is already answered, kind of.
Yeah, I think just maybe like day-to-day and stepping into the job. I mean, I'm sure Ed can attest, there are ten million things that need to be done on any given day and you don't know when a water main is gonna break or it's gonna snow twenty-five inches overnight. Um, so just thinking about prioritization, um, how do you go about prioritizing your day and, and what do you do if a competing task comes in that's seemingly right up there with the top priority? How do you weigh that out, how do you handle that?
Uh, that's, that's a good one. I would say there's certainly gonna be a learning curve, uh, no bones about that. Uh, there's, I'm sure, a lot to learn and I'm sure Ed can attest to that, there's a lot going on. I would, I would say it's a matter of triage and you just have to decide what is the most important to the public interest at that moment, um, as far as interruption of services or heaven forbid a threat to, you know, life or property or something like that, those obviously, working through that. And, uh, you know, I mean, blowing up on an accident scene, you know, you, you show up and you've just got this mess in front of you. You know, what's the most important thing at that exact moment? Obviously protecting life, right? So we have to triage that scene, we have to determine what's, well, first of all, you stop and you look and you think and you orient and then you decide and act. So, uh, our, our firefighters here in the room, um, know about that and you can't just go running into it, you know, guns ablaze and, and hope that the problem's just gonna solve itself, 'cause that can create other problems. So taking a step back and relying on other people. 'Cause there, there are professionals, there's people that have been doing this for a very long time and, eh, you know, eh, anybody who's too proud to ask for help has got a problem because there are people that can help and are more than willing to help. Um, and tempering that because you don't want them to take over, um, you know, but if there's somebody that's an expert at a specific task, by all means, what do you think? You know, how do you think we should proceed? So reaching out and asking for help is also a, a top priority. Until the ball gets rolling and you, you know, as soon as you begin to understand how it all works together and you're able to triage those tasks because, well, you did it last year this way and it worked, uh, or you did it, you know, last year that way and it didn't work, so now we've gotta take a different approach, so. Um, being flexible and willing to adapt the situation and stopping and thinking and applying the most logical, um, approach and plan of action, I think, is how you get through that stuff.
Charity, eh, or Sam or Andrew, any other questions? Do you have any questions? Since you will be working closely with whoever we pick.
Anybody wanna submit a question? This is a chance for the public to submit a question.
Paper's over there, Tana just has to review it, make sure we're not breaking any laws by asking the ethical questions. Do you have any questions about the process or?
Yes, but I don't necessarily know that this is the best place for just some of the minutia. I do have a commentary though.
Oh, well, yes.
This is certainly an interesting process and I understand the necessity for transparency and I appreciate all of you who showed up here tonight. We had a meeting last Tuesday as well, certainly a sparser crowd. I will say that, you know, as a council, you guys, I think, are doing the things that you need to do to be as transparent as possible. And, um, you made a point earlier, Kimberly, about you guys are elected and we rely on you to make decisions for the city, um, in the best interest of the city. And, you know, I would say, you know, the past several years have been a, a testament to that, of what's been gotten done around here. And I, I do think that, uh, it's, it's, it's good because you can go drive anywhere in this part of America and you can see the towns that are dying. If you're not growing, you're dying. And staying on top of that and having a forward-thinking mindset to attract businesses and build housing and, uh, also maintain that small-town feel. I'm glad that Horse Track and Casino is being built over there and not here 'cause they're gonna have all kinds of interesting things to deal with up there, not just from a law enforcement standpoint, but, uh, there's, there's a lot to be said for how things are around Grant and, and I like it and I wanna, I wanna be more involved.
It's a very good question. So after you have time to work with the public works and you, you've gone for your ride, you're out there a couple of weeks, you've worked in the office and you see how things work, do you think you will change the hours the guys work, the public works, department works, to like normal business hours?
So I will say that I think it's going to be a matter of striking a balance. I understand there's a way things are done and probably always have been done. You hear that a lot, this is the way we've always done it. That's fine, I can respect that. Just because it's the way things have always been done doesn't always make it the best way or maybe even the right way, so. I think it would be a matter of determining, and eh, eh, I think it would be a, a seasonal issue. Obviously, you cannot scrape ice off the ground at six in the morning in the middle of winter. Uh, if we know the sun's gonna be coming out later and it's gonna start melting it a little bit, maybe, hey guys, let's shift it, let's come in at ten instead and work a little bit later or something, or come in at nine. It's gonna be a case-by-case basis, I think, because obviously in the, in the summertime, you wanna come in early when it's cooler and you can be more productive and, um, you know, and then also depending on if we've got a bunch of snow removal or something or a big project going on, everybody's working over, hey, you guys, uh, you know, what would work best for you? I mean, let's, let's be reasonable, let's come to a compromise. Uh, you don't wanna just upset the apple cart because certainly our, our city employees are valuable and you don't wanna just come in guns ablaze and, and everybody just leaves because, well, this guy is trying to change everything. It's, you gotta strike a balance, going back to the herding cows thing. You know, I think there's an expectation and a standard and, um, you know, I think there can certainly be some, uh, some tweaks and some adjustments and, um, over time, learning and understanding how these guys operate. Um, all I have is a, is an outside view, so I, I don't know what a, a day entails. I know currently where I'm at now, um, and my current manager is pretty flexible. You know, if we work a long day one day, he's like, hey, take off a few hours early the next day or at the end of the week, so, um, and that, that, that's kind of a nice option to have too because ultimately, at the end of the day, you know, we, we work to live, we don't live to work and family comes first and so being able to have that flexibility to make accommodations, I think, is important, so. It's a case-by-case basis, I believe.
And I agree, and having a nice work-life balance, it is important to keep employees in that whole scenario, please. Okay, last chance for any other questions. All right, um, at this time, I need one of the council members to, um, make a motion to go into executive session for protection of the public's interest for potential, or for, for, for prevention of needless injury to reputation of an individual or individuals.
Can we just say I will make that motion?
Yes.
And not repeat the whole thing? Now, to, to include, uh, the council, the, the attorney? And, and the clerk? At seven eighteen.
Kimberly has moved to go into executive session. Attorney second, at seven eighteen, any discussion? Andrew, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Kimmy?
Yes.
Motion. Okay, we will move into executive session. Motion, okay, we will move into executive session.
Recording stopped.
I worked with one guy, I saw the Nebraska four, and we checked a hundred and twenty yards up there, and we found a kind of violations, and it was crazy and it was Here's, here's the deal. Here's the deal. There's all the research that has been done, including what she built the project down in and also, if the city can, she can increase the contest. It's, the harvest of those roosters has no effect on the population. At a certain point, yeah, and I forget, you know, program numbers, you would have to pick like eighty-five percent of issues out of the population that were negative, that can nest over some large year, and if you look at, it's not really a lot of money on their place. Right, or, you know, where, where they do the birds, you know, some of them escape no matter how hard we get to hunt it and everything, and to get that number of roosters being harvested where people are harvesting hens, does not, uh, you know, those roosters, only so many roosters actually do the best. The rest of them, you know, they strut their stuff, they're, they're better. So harvesting those surplus birds doesn't have any that negative effect on them. What we need to have more of is, we need more habitat away, you know, you know, or, you know, what they found that with all of their research is, having that vertical structure out there, especially CRP is huge on survival of birds through the wintertime and also higher than nest success. Having small grains on the landscape, especially like haul meat stubble, things like that, peasants have a twenty percent success to nest nest success in, uh, smaller grain stubble or corn, zero. Um, or close to zero, unless it's weed, you know, corn or something like that, where the weeds are in there. Otherwise, they're not selecting that, uh. And, you know, obviously predator controls and other things, but that's hard to do with this on a large scale. The habitat is by far what helps. And everything, so, and, you know, talking to some different people, you know, I'm relatively new to the, the Grant area. Um, but talking to some other areas, you know, down around Trenton, you know, population kind of hit rock bottom a season. We are starting to see an uptick, we went the last couple of years, we've had decent moisture, the cover looks great out there. If we can just get another year or two of that and get more habitat, we should start bouncing. So, I'm district supervisor for the Southwest district, so my district goes from Cherokee County all the way to, to Duster County, Lincoln County, all the way down to like Berthas County, everything west of Colorado. Nope, I'm still alive, I can count on that.
We sound the same, Nick, it feels so weird.
Yeah.
Well, it's funny, you know, just where I live, usually you see pheasants in the backyard, and I got that whole mildew field, there has been a cut, you know.
Some places where you think they're being loaded, or they have in the past, yeah, you know, uh, not so much, you know, and all of a sudden you'll just sit there on the road and see a bunch of pheasants and scurry that high.
Quiet, there's a lot of quiet down south here.
One thing that I've noticed, and like I said, I haven't been here that long, only since September twenty-seventh, but it seems like you go in the south and east, numbers are, are better that direction. You go north, and the one time I went over around Brandon there, uh, I actually saw quite a few birds just driving down the road, just several times, but they were running across the road.
Southeast, they shoot a lot of hogs down there, so.
Don't get me started on that. I actually dealt with that one, the one citation I've written in Perkins County. Well. The guy, it was a weird deal, a guy caught a hawk in a trap and then we get a call that someone was driving by, but it was totally a hawk.
I remember there was a northern herder.
Yeah.
You told me, you're like, I was like, what kind of, you're like, it's a northern herder? Or something like that, and I was like, that's pretty cool, what was that, it was a?
Chaiot trap or something.
Yeah, it was a.
That's one old trap that had maiden plain sight, which is why you caught it, but literally, I was riding with one of the other guys and we come over the hill and the guy's holding a gun, he just shot in the trap.
Yeah.
He looks up at us and I, I mean, you couldn't have planned it, man, he was coming over the hill, and the guy's just like
Smoking gun.
And so we go up and talk to him and, I mean, he was good, and I was just like, yeah, shouldn't have done that, huh, I'm like, so. That would have, might, might have been a bigger punishment, just doing that.
Like eating crow? In this case, hawk, yeah.
Yeah. But, no, so far, I mean, and, and spread the word on something for me, the, my wife works for Pheasants Forever in O'Walla. She's running a new program called the Tanning Cat, Nebraska Community Access Program or whatever it is. And what she's doing is, and this is the first year that she didn't start kind of until the spring, so it'll really start beginning this steam next year, but um, she's gonna be working with landowners and businesses in this area around O'Walla, um, Big Springs to increase public access for hunting with an emphasis on hunters, but also all types of hunting. She just signed up a twenty-six thousand acre ranch around Martha for public cattle. But there's also other things that she can do with her deal, where they got a bunch of money through grants, donations for habitat improvements, uh, you know, basically putting more habitat and work on landscape to increase the population. They have good birds, bring more people in the community, invest in money, that type of stuff. And that's what they're hoping to try to do with this program, they're doing a tail tower contest right now. Two places donated, like a really nice dog prey, and it's, it's based on things like that. I got it up there, so I can grab that, I'll give that, yeah, definitely. She can tell you a lot more about what I can. I just gotta shake off sometimes when she starts scrambling, giving out federal activities.
That one's a little bigger, it's just a dog.
You'd be out of city limits there.
Oh, you gotta, that, I mean, you gotta stop going to Blue Spring every morning, you gotta get out there to feed the birds first. That ain't gonna happen, dude.
Not gonna happen, then I'll say, ah, good.
So is that your, your mileage?
Yes, my line is mostly stuff.
Oh, I just, I Okay, cause when I, where I live, I can see it out there, and one day I was where we bought, uh, White House, I'm looking at it. Okay. Okay, well, one day I was out putting stuff in the work truck, and I heard a gackling out there, I'm like, is there town bird getting fat on my own, so. Close. Then later, it's on the north side of the house, not the south side.
Oh, that's the north side?
Yeah.
Oh, my lord.
Yeah, you have, um, it's just that one street, I guess.
That's gonna be one, well, there's gonna be Bishop, Bishop Avenue and Southway Avenue. Those are the ones that are north-south, Bishop's, no longer, it's not, I thought they were gonna name it like Pearl Street or something. That's what I'm saying, it was, was a market. It's southbound, yeah.
Bishop's, yeah, they're named, they're, they're not easy, they're named, yes, okay.
Make sure you're up to feed birds. You'll handle it, restore that, there's a population.
Berthasburg.
We've got those Mississippi cats.
Yeah.
There's a population of here, not as well, north side and north side. It's pretty wild, cause they're they're called Mississippi cats.
So they're small type of hawk.
They're, they're those gray ones and they got That's a stretch, that's a stretch. They live in my in-law's trees, and one time, one, what did I call them, these were nine or twelve days ago, but one flew in the garage, and it was nothing but craters, and I was like, what the heck are we doing? I think, I think I said the door opened, I don't believe, and it did, but they, every year, they raise a bunch of babies and they start off little, so the two parents will show up, and then by the end of summer, it'll be like five or six out of them.
It's, it's interesting, cause I didn't know there was any deer, but like, yeah, there's a few that live in O'Walla. There's some in Northland, some in Cook, and I've had twice in Cook, being the one down there where people shot them. Cause they come down, they'll, they're kinda scared of their nest, so they'll
They'll die.
They'll die mom, and they don't actually hit you, while some people are like, oh gosh, they're gonna kill my little yam dog. And, I mean, they're not that big, you know.
They eat insects, don't they?
Yeah, they primarily eat insects, they'll, I mean, if they get a little small mouse, they'll eat that, but, I mean, they're they're not taking, you know, like, cats and those.
I've got one bird in the trees, like, you know, every night he has
Having a hio, three, four, no?
And he's a big one.
Oh, yeah. Those will kill a carrot.
Yeah, they could kill a small dog.
You know.
That, when the red horned owl's used to nest above the door at school. And he had, he'd been these, I, I looked up in there once and there was a rooster pheasant stuck in wedge into it. And there were a few other odds and squirrels, you know, put it up there.
Refrigerator. They documented those great horned owls in, in the southeast United States taking turkeys gobbling out of trees. They hit them, when they start gobbling on the tree, they'd hit them and grab a hold of them, and they'd bite their head off before they hit the ground, and they'd let go of them. Duck and bird get done flocking, go down there and eat it until something else came upon them.
What's my story, I heard about them, there's no man on a branch outside, the turkey, and it's starting moving in. The turkey moving in, pretty soon you're against the grain, you're dead.
Well, cause he can use that owl call for turkeys.
Yeah, so barred owl's a different species of owl and that works really good, especially when you get east here in the United States to get in the shot gobblers.
So we did that down in Georgia, and turkey up in the peasant down there, and that was the first thing we did, is just start out hooting like an owl, and you hear them, you know? He throws out a couple more hoots and owls start gobbling, and you, cause everything's all canyon, you know, hollers, you know, the physical hollers, and everything echoes in there, so, it seemed like they're, they're close, but they're actually probably, so, yeah, plus these are a lot of the production, and it was pretty cool, I had no idea that turkeys, or owls, or whatever.
It's a shot gobblers, talks to it.
Yeah, my father-in-law, they're right in the local, they live right in the local game. My nephew, uh, Farah has a grass down there. Every evening, the game turkeys would come out, we, you know, it's like eating. They come in, walk, he's like, they look different, or a hands hunter. You didn't shoot them, but if you wanted a deer, they'd eat a rat, they'd come to the spring.
Eat the garden?
No, eat the rosebelle.
Oh, yeah.
Always getting that about that dumbbeller.
Dumbbeller turkeys. Her babies.
Yeah.
So, video of, uh, my aunt walking across the driveway down my bent side of Lincoln.
I said, well, I heard there was one up the Elkhorn.
You just walked right?
Jeez.
Yeah, it's true. Well, they got in here, it's just, yeah, I did. I know down at Taylor, on that, on that river, Republican, I can see there, uh, they told me all the time, they have them down there, up and down the river.
We tried to catch them on this western reservoir.
It did.
We, and I'm still mad about this, we, uh, we have them, kept showing up on the same property, it was like awkward, like every nine days, he'd show up for two days. And what you can do is, you can take a roadkill deer, throw it out there, where they keep coming along, and they'll grab it and they'll pull it into, as long as it's not too rotten, it's fairly fresh, they'll drag it off somewhere and stash it, eat on it. So, we threw one out there and it was sub-zero temperature, it's like February, it's like maybe it's cold out, we throw this dead deer out there, it's a obstacle, this lion shows up and carries it, and then we got this video of this lion trying to carry this like absolute stiff deer, and it carries it over in these cedar trees. And we find it the next day and it didn't even melt, what they'll do is they'll cache it, they'll kind of bury it all up. And, uh, so we put a trail camera picture, and you can see it try to eat on it, but I mean, this thing's frozen solid, it, it came up. So, and other things took over it, well, not nine days later, it shows up again, so. There's a roadkill deer, we throw it out there, first night, it takes it in the trees. We follow it, you can see kind of the drag marks, we find it in the trees, and it's kind of eerie, cause they're close, right?
Yeah, nobody lives there.
Oh, yeah, and, but we're in there and we're looking at it, and there's a few, like, little toughest grass on it, and you can see where they on some We put the trail camera on there, and I'm like, we need to put the trap out. And the biologist, our head guy, Lincoln Samuelson, who's a purgerer, he was on vacation for another day, and he wanted to be there to catch it. He goes, oh, I don't think it's really cached it, don't set it, just take a camera. So that night, for like nine hours, that cat was sitting on top of this thing, munching on its um, sleeping next to it, like all night. On this carcass, eats a little bit more than leaves, and I'm like, it's, it's go time. So we, what you do is you cut off like the leg of it, and you put this big life trap and you kind of put cedar tree branches under it, you put that in the back. And they're huge life traps, and they'll go in there. What we really want to do is put a collar on it, get DNA sample, and kind of figure out where it goes, put a GPS collar on it and get real time where it is. And, uh, so, we put that out there and like right at sunset, a possum goes in there, sets off the trap. And we've got this possum in the life trap, and obviously it's closed, right? And the mountain lion walks around the trap, and then we never saw it again. And it's just like, oh, a possum goes in there and spoils it. If we had have set that trap, like the night before, we would have got it, and we had all the stuff, the one by all just shattered, we had collars and all that stuff to do it. But the one thing, Lincoln, is like, we've never caught one in the southwest, like, how would it be there for it?
You can be there after it.
Right?
So we had that possum, so it's kind of.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I got seven of them out in my garage.
That's where they come from, huh?
They all went out in the country. It took about two and a half weeks to get them all trapped.
Cool.
Of course, I drive with a massive box of all over the place.
Oh, yeah.
You ever get porcupines in this town?
Uh, I don't know, back in two thousand thirteen, there was a porcupine, I walked into the hatchess part of the lawn. And me and another deputy were trying to get it to leave, like go over the tracks and go back south. Put like, cool, how do you get a porcupine, you know, somewhere? Like, you don't?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we had our pit lions, we're like that, and it's like flicking his tail around, and that thing was just mad. So we kind of just stayed back and let it kind of do its thing, and they eventually crossed the tracks and it went.
Well.
Surprising that everybody, yeah, your place.
I, I see cows, and, well, we're just right next to the state here, but I, I, I'll catch cows on the, yeah, cameras, not even going down the yard.
It was over by your house, for a month ago, you should near.
Oh, yeah. They're, they're out just out of town, I mean, I'll, if I were to leave the office sometimes, it sounds like they're just right down by the Rainbow Building, but just out of town, but I mean, wow, I mean, more than one, but it's.
You could, you get a nice cold night, you know, and it was.
Yeah.
They're, I think they're further away than what they sound.
I haven't heard of them last two, three years.
Just the owls, you know, asking about porcupines, I don't have a porcupine all the time.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah, they'd be curled up next to, be right next to the house on the sunny side during the daytime. And you can curl them by the back door, and the people would be like, need to load their dogs out, and you do that, but they don't. See my, and you know, the. Yeah, that was.
Cause they have to stop the wall, there's something, they'll lie in the park, I pulled in his yard one day, and the dog, he's a friend of mine. And I pulled it up, put it trailer, and that dog was mad, and jabbed come out, that's the one that, my dog, I mean, he's mad, and I said, what about him? Come here. Daniel was burning.
Oh, it's crazy.
He was, he wanted nothing to do with it.
But I've been away from the house when you had to do that, like what's, what's your, uh, the rules?
Typically, well, one time we used a plastic coat. And basically, it's curled up next to the house, get the heat, and we put that next to there, and took the tom ass and kind of hit him, and he flicked his tail, but he kind of got tired of you doing that. And he, yeah, he'd go into that, and then you take the lid, put that on there, turn it, close it, and then duct tape the spot out there. And then go dump it off somewhere else, so.
Right, because past Mickey had a, you know, coon, didn't he?
Yeah, uh.
I, I was down here, that was back in my days, when I was running a lot, and I came back into town, and this coon runs across the intersection here. What? And then I found out it was Ryan's pet. Then my dog and I chased a furry dog, and I went there by the bowling alley around, and nothing, and, and back when they had the heads in front of the seniors. And it went in there and said he wanted to go in and get it, and he don't need to go in that. Well, the best thing I've heard of Doug, who's in town, he, he was working for a kind of tarpaw out there in Denver, and they hired a tarpaw, they had a water tarp. And they put, soaked it, and they shoot it down in the holes, and he turned it up, and they catch him in the, like, the office, there was a motion, they leave a clean.
Really?
He spent all day, he was like, yeah, and shoot water, soak down.
We let him live.
Yeah, and I, I hope my aunt was still with it, I hope the aunt, I said, it's kind of hard for Doug to let a furry dog live like that. But yeah, they just shoot soap down there, and then when they come out, they drive them.
All clean?
Clean, and say regocean, and then.
They have furry dogs about, that's the only.
Yeah. Yeah, they can have them, not very remembered.
Right, yeah, well, not especially by the airport.
Oh, yeah.
Long, I'm sorry, decked out in.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go run out to my friend, grab his car.
I called my brother last night, he said it's raining yesterday morning, and didn't quit the wait last night.
Oh, yeah, was that an alba or?
Alba, got it. Yeah, I saw a pod, one of the radar things. Yeah, he said it was hard rain. That's not us.
Yeah, you can't.
Why is it that's the only thing that's pretty good, right?
Well, it's, they have to get the sunrise and sunset pretty accurate, dude.
Yeah. Sunrise.
Faces of the moon.
Yeah.
You got something for us? I shot one, I, I shot Bambi's little brother. I probably could have waited, but it was my turn this year, I've taken it away, I lost four years, and I'm on myself, so. I got a little, little butt fever, and after that, I'm just gonna kill the thing. He's, he's a decent, decent guy, but Sailor shot, hello shot, on Sunday morning, this was about ten minutes after sunrise. We found this one, you know, like, and I go, she made a three hundred yard foul.
You knew it was a girl.
Yeah, pretty awesome.
Walling?
Yeah.
I'm going to go. Right, right, good to get you. I already got one.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess you see your name, I was working for the post last night, they're teaching the law. And I'm gonna see their name on the screen too. Well, your colors, purpose, can't you?
Yeah, we got a new guy that moved to North Platte, and he does Lincoln here for his, uh, every class. Obviously, since I'm here, you know, people have, uh, I'll, I'll respond to it if I'm not busy with other things, I've got a North Platte, people may be in the district office there. Uh, Jacob Skoneski's the, you know, the other guy that may respond to stuff, there's something there. And Alex Hayes, now is my sergeant, that kind of covers my north sub-district, which is with Pauline, so, and he's with us.
Thanks, yeah. Thank you.
That phone number, problems, you can give to anyone else if anyone has, or there's a new game order in town, whatever.
Yeah, oh, I didn't know that, too. At least I know people are here.
Yeah, I know, it took you a while.
You didn't get that?
Yeah.
I knew. Oh. Yeah, my first day, I thought that one, I knew he was.
He spoke to you out.
California license?
Yeah.
Well, I turned right in LA and I just kept going.
Ken Pauls, who was up at the commissioner meeting yesterday, and they went to USC.
Right, I heard about that.
Took it, okay. Twenty miles, two and a half hours.
Oh, yeah, feel free to, do my life for sure, I was pretty standard.
I wasn't happy either, but they worked to find the situation yesterday.
I'll give you your phone.
Uh, we got a video, I mean, oh, that, that Friday at one thirty. Uh, Mark Bottoms, uh, by the way, yesterday. And we're gonna meet with Stephanie and Ken Pauls, starting show, I'll be there, and we're gonna discuss the way.
It's kind of dying.
Huh?
One thirty?
One thirty, because. Yep.
Sure.
What is that?
Well, okay, uh.
Well, it's tough.
It's not a lot of.
Not that far.
Trying to clear.
Yes.
You know.
Give her a search about a night.
I took her. Years.
Absolutely. So, to me, that's that.
Feel free to, give her a, uh, show, uh.
She only enjoy it every night.
She, she works forward.
Also, there's that person, I bring this kind of.
She absorbs more numbers forever.
Every single year, convention is on.
I was, I was worried the best.
All that stuff.
But it were pretty smooth, my question to.
Uh, that's one reason why I work here, uh, but she, uh.
What did you brought in?
Her, she has an area, she can tell you North Platte, but it's called that end cap area, which is like, so. Probably keep counting parts of Lake.
Nobody deserves the more.
Dual county, Arthur County.
So nobody deserves the more, if they're on the second.
Now, one thirty twenty.
There would be, yeah. Which one do we show, I think, I think they were looking at it, so I'm trying to put it in, you know, like, currently.
CO two pipeline, you heard about that?
Sure.
Yeah, they want to pump it, CO two, and they're, into Wyoming, burying it in the ground, so.
Good to meet you all.
We like the thing.
Somewhere back east, I don't know, they got these big scrubbers that pull it out of the atmosphere, and they put it in a pipeline, and they ship it to Wyoming, and.
Lots of vitamin fiber in there.
Yes, so it is, it's, it's that Inflation Reduction Act money.
Yeah.
And you got companies like Tallgrass and stuff that are, and they actually pull, I think they're, with their, their natural gas transport lines already. So they used to be pumping natural gas from Wyoming back east and making money off of it. Now, they're pumping CO two back to Wyoming and burying it in, there are like, down in Cabo or something, and they seal it down.
Well, this summer was kind of something about that.
Well, it's, so. A little bit about that, it's, the ethanol point, magic's gonna end up doing it, but it's, from what I've understood is, they basically made it, the, the ethanol points, they pretty much made it for either to steal or die. If you don't do it, you're not gonna. But I know, like, some of them is, they, I mean, I grabbed a little bit of Melissa's club, and then part. I get friends, it's, you know, I do, but ethanol, he's talking about, like, southern, late to the game, and then now. They're going to have to somehow figure out how to get it across the river, across the interstate, and it's like twenty-seven miles or something, I don't know, hmm. But it's made them, uh, I mean, it's almost pushing against the wall, basically, you won't survive if you give it their, their, uh, whatever you want, uh. Green, go green score, or whatever, right, I believe, their mission score, or whatever, but it's supposed to, they, they, I mean, it's, Mike is. Made it sound like that they've, it's a, it's a good guy, you know, if you don't.
They've been close to being extinct for quite some time now. Somebody finds some more money and starts it up again, and then shut back down, like, suddenly?
Yeah. Makes you. It's gonna be interesting with, you know, the new administration coming in, because, I'm sorry, I left them complete with dinosaur bones. Not without a lot of help from Uncle Sam, having this, you know, how much energy you heard, I don't know if there's some term for it, but I mean, it's, you know, a gallon of. Fruit oil has so much more potential energy than a gallon of corn or ethanol, and it's, it just, you can't compete. So it has to be heavily subsidized by the Fed. I understand it's a nice thing, farmers grow a lot of corn, but I'm fundamentally opposed to any market that is played favorites by the Fed, or Hatch Hall, to make it competitive. It's like the solar craft, you know, and the wind was, you know, nobody would kill them and put them in if they weren't getting huge checks. You know, because they're, they just can't compete with a coal firing plant, or even a nuclear plant, you know, put that stuff in there.
Well, over in Iowa, uh, they got all their windows up to there, and they're all backed by Warren Love.
Yeah.
And he gets fourteen percent on the future.
Yeah. Well, there's money, and those things only last for what, four years?
Well, then, when they first started, they had problems with bearings, and they were made in Germany, so the Germans had to go over and install the bearings. On Wyoming, I had a lot of problems over there.
Well, I know they were trying to do in South of North Platte, up on the other, and Cameron said, no, we, because they couldn't guarantee that they'd be removed when they reach their end of life. And usually, that's, I mean, there was old, those old wind companies, I mean, they're a flash in the pan, they, they operate for about five years, they go belly out, and they're gone, and. Now you got all those windrows out here, you want to be fun, and nobody's gonna happen.
That's like that monster, Kim, when they started with seven, and one of them was always breaking down and so forth. So they shut down for one down, another twelve, different company.
Yeah.
They'll go west of, uh, Paxton. Yeah. All those on both sides of the interstate, a little, a little center.
Oh, it used to be a nice.
Still working?
Yeah, they're brand new.
Oh.
They're brand new.
I'd be so mad, because once you get, yeah, once you get past like Fleming, and you're coming in down to the, it's really, there's, there's some nice houses out there. And just had, just panoramic, beautiful views, and now they get to stare at these checkered peanut pins. I'm just amazed when people don't shoot out a three hundred wingman, might do something to a bearing.
I think it would.
I'm just, I'm not saying you should.
You know, I talked about this here about ten years ago. Denver's running out of water, so this building there from Denver come out, and we have to hunt it. And he was gonna start drilling wells, and he was gonna put the water in the tanks, and then on train and take it to Denver and dump it in the reservoir.
But apparently, they've tried for years and years and years in Keith County, only thing that's stopping them in Keith County from, from, from now farms, is the fact that they have the ball deal, uh.
Oh, that's.
The five guys, they're up there, and, and if they took out one of the ball deals, you wouldn't care how rich that company was, they would buy it up.
Well, they would put one out here, four miles, because it was a flat pattern of the eagle, and they found it. Is it open?
Yeah.
And they found a mess of gray fox.
I was like, oh my gosh, it's hot here. Of course, there's, there's always, no, it's freezing, it's cold. The heat kicked on once, it felt so good. It's cold. I'm like, I got enough, thank you. I'm like, I got enough, thank you.
The motion to come out of executive.
Oh, I will, I'll do that, and I will make a motion to come out of executive session at seven fifty-nine PM.
Second.
Kimberly, move, and second step, we come out of executive session, in discussion. Tierney Honeybuck?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Commission carries. We want to thank everybody for coming tonight, I, and give the public one more opportunity for any questions before we conclude the interview. Any last question? Jesse, as an employee, did you have any last question? All right, Scott, did you have any questions for us before we conclude the interview?
Not at the moment.
Okay, great, well, I, I appreciate you being here tonight and coming to this very public interview, probably the most public interview you have ever been to. Um, any comments by the council?
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for being part of this process, I know it's a hard process, of thinking or setting it out. And thank the public for showing up and being willing to act, be willing to be here and ask questions.
Yeah.
So we are adjourned at eight o'clock.
Yeah, I would be sorry.
Yes.
Recording stopped.